And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The Republic of Washington.
One nation.
Justice for all.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Scally?
Here.
Councillor Dilaba?
Here.
Councillor Fisher?
Here.
Councillor Kennedy?
Here.
Councillor Powers?
Here.
Councillor Rees?
Here.
Councillor Scamperly?
Here.
Form present.
Our first item will be read by City Manager Stephen Jellie.
A local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal laws, section 3C.
I'll second that. Discussion, please. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers? Councillor Powers? Councillor Reed?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager Stephen Jellie.
Mayor, this is in entirety. Summary statement adoption of preliminary budget as amended. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Augsburg adopts the 2021 preliminary budget as hereby amended. Councillors, you have as delivered yesterday by email and hand carry the amendments as discussed at budget workshops and with each of you throughout the budget process for consideration. And therefore be it resolved that the following rate shall be in effect for 2021. The city real property tax rate for 2021 shall be seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation.
I shall move.
I second. Discussion?
So, it seems that the fire department has made some pretty substantial offers to the city. I'd like to amend this to see no cuts right now and I'd like to see the city accept those offers.
I think we do. I think we accept them. That they would be great in addition to lowering from ten to seven firemen. That would be great if they would be willing to.
So, the cuts that they're offering, but the way I read it is over two million dollars over the course of several years, of course, as opposed to six hundred thousand dollars in cuts for taking several men. That's almost immediately in the first year, plus the lawsuit that's pending. And of course, a vote of yes for this preliminary budget is certainly in breach of contract and it's going to bring on a lawsuit that's probably going to cost the city millions on top of that. And so, there's no way I can vote for this in good conscience and cost the city taxpayers millions and millions of dollars unnecessarily.
Could the city manager please provide a summary of the offer and his opinion of it?
Absolutely. Councillor received a written settlement proposal, not a negotiation session. We had a meeting planned for this morning at eight thirty with the firefighters' union. Been planned for a couple of days. We were going to sit down and have some discussion. Union president had had some discussion with the city councillor and voiced his desire to sit down and try to work out a solution. That meeting was canceled shortly before the meeting was supposed to occur. I thought that was unfortunate. Thought we were going to have a good opportunity to talk through it. So, the written proposal, I've not had time to fully analyze or quantify the information, but it doesn't speak to any cohesive or collective solution in reducing staffing. That is the primary objective we have to get to, which is reducing staffing. So, there was a proposal there to have as many people off on vacation. There was a proposal to remove, give up an EMT stipend.
Kathy, I can't hear you.
Are related, but not quantifiable.
Councillor Powers says that he can't hear you.
I can hear you.
It was Councillor Scamperly. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Mr. Kennedy, can you hear me? Kennedy or Powers, can you hear?
I can hear.
Okay. Okay. So, I can't speak in concurrence. It's going to save millions of dollars. We need the staffing reductions. This isn't a popular reduction by any stretch. I think this is also not a popularity contest that we're running here. We're trying to save a city. I don't think the firefighter's proposal was serious that they sent me. It involved some other extraneous details in there to free some people from disciplinary actions that the city has in motion. And that's just not good faith, especially in the ninth hour of us passing this budget. So, I will look at what they sent. I will also continue to hope that they encourage their membership to take advantage of the twenty thousand dollar buyout retirement incentive that we've offered. There are, by their numbers, ten firefighter personnel that can retire. We are now talking about reducing the overall strength of the force by seven. So, it appears that we can easily get to the numbers that we need to make it more affordable for the city through attrition without having to lay off a single person. So, it appears the decision of which to assist in that process lies squarely with the firefighters' union and firefighters themselves.
Have we formalized any offer that guarantees it? Like, have they been given a formal offer of what exactly it includes and that money is guaranteed?
Our councilor has given an offer pending only your approval and I obviously have to speak to the financial restructuring board who has given us every assurance that they are going to work with us and do their best as they have done with each and every other grant and each and every other recommendation that they made in funding it. So, I don't see where this council or the financial restructuring board would disapprove it. But outside of that, yes, they were given these specific details of the offer and really wanted I needed to have those by.
If, say, the financial restructuring board does not come through, can they rescind their retirement? If they can make it pending that money? If it doesn't come through, can they rescind their retirement offer if they wanted to?
Yeah, certainly. Nobody will force anyone to retire. You can pull your retirement application. And certainly I would expect that retirement applications would be pending them getting this. I will also say it would be my recommendation to this council, if we did not get the money from the financial restructuring board, that there would be a recommendation for me that we fund it in-house because I believe it would be an efficient use of our funds to do that. So, I believe that we have got the retirements covered in either direction.
Has it been given to them in writing or just verbally?
It's given to them in writing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just some clarity here for me. You made mention that it's relevant to actual staffing numbers. When in actuality, the whole concept here was to the attempt to save money at the end of the day. And from what I see of this offer and from what I understand of this offer, over the course of some time, it has the potential to save nearly two and a half, a little over two million dollars. I don't see how that can't be taken into good faith regardless of some extraneous issues that you're claiming in this regarding some potential discipline. I mean, these are what talks are for. And, you know, from what I understand, you know, this meeting that was apparently canceled for whatever reason, regardless of that, the obvious to me is that they stepped forward with significant savings over the course of a couple of years. And you're saying yourself that you never really had time to take a look at it. Well, that, I mean, you're on record continually asking for them to come forward to discuss something or to offer up solutions, in which they did. And you openly admitted that you didn't take the time to take a look at it or even go back and forth or communicate regarding it. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that, especially with the potential savings that they have come forward with. From what I understand, it looks like a pretty solid deal on my end. But, you know, if that's your position and you're obviously looking for the positions, then the record's been pretty well clear here. It's not about savings. It's about issues with the fire department.
I disagree on that.
I'm not talking to you. I was talking to the city manager.
Yeah, I'll take that, Councillor. So, I did read it with the time I had today. Obviously, today is a busy day on our budget preparation. I did have some back and forth with the union president. And what I told him, I've been clear since the beginning. I'm not looking for haircut level savings here. This isn't about can we cut equipment? Can we drop an EMT stipend that we probably shouldn't have anyway because we're already getting paid hefty salaries for doing our job? We're talking about saving the city. We're talking about reviving the city. We are talking about needing deep cuts for a long period of time. And while I appreciate what they sent me, it isn't anywhere near what we were talking about. So, you know, I'm plenty happy to keep negotiations going from this point forward, you know, till the end. I won't stop asking for the negotiation, but I've got to have the other party get serious. We have to reduce staffing. But here, the minority are well aware of this. I am aiming now for the same number that you all were aiming for last year. So, I will appreciate the council supporting, a number of the others supported at this very time last year. The fire department staffing needs to be reduced to twenty.
I think there's been an incredible offer on the table, incredible offer to save the city millions, millions of dollars by the fire department. Incredibly gracious to just give up so much here with these concessions. I think it's wrong to call this minimal. Maybe you didn't, but that's what it's coming across as. And I think this whole budget should be postponed, not only for this reason, to give you a chance to accept the amendments. This budget should be tabled because the public doesn't even have a chance to really address the issues here. It's a twofold thing. Number one, the breach of contract, which is going to cost the city millions. I know it is. Just look at what happened in Watertown. And the other thing here is I think that the public needs a chance to speak to this.
If I may speak, anyone, can I take a turn?
Go ahead.
First of all, Dan, you did say that Sarah Purdy was going to cost us millions for her to leave and it did not amount to millions or anything. The other thing is, from this other two councils, can I ask, is that true that you guys were looking for eight cuts last year before we were elected? Is that true?
That's the way negotiations began, of course.
So, you guys were eight that last year at this time and now object to eight this year?
So.
Well, call it good.
I suppose I can answer. I can answer. I mean, you know, that was the starting point in negotiations with the then city manager, who her job, per the charter, was to negotiate. And the reason why the meeting was canceled this morning was because the city manager invited the mayor in to negotiate with the fire department this morning and that charter says that that's not the case. And that's why, from what I understand, the meeting was canceled. So, as a starting point, that was where I believe Sarah started at eight. And through negotiations, good talk negotiations, they came to the fore.
So, what you're saying, Mike, is that she kept good notes too. So, you're saying that that eight was at the initial phase of negotiations? It wasn't at the point of impasse?
There were a lot of numbers being thrown around in the beginning. I don't want to quote eight because I wasn't the one that negotiated the contract with them, per the charter. Not my job to do that. It's not yours. It's not anybody on this panel. It's the city manager's job.
Listen, all I'm trying to do is get a handle on what I just heard. And at what point in time, the three of us were here, and if eight was acceptable at this time last year or if it wasn't at the starting point and it was at the impasse, then you were well into it. And that does make a big difference as far as where I said.
Anything was acceptable, Steve. I'm not saying that. I never said that. And don't put words in my mouth. I'm not saying that that was ever acceptable. That's what I, from what I understand, and don't quote me on it. And that's from what I understand, the then city manager started with negotiations with the fire department. You, being a former union head, know how negotiations start. It starts high or it starts extremely high and you work your way to common ground.
Well, if it was eight at impasse, there's a big difference in negotiation. And I just.
They never went to impasse. They never started mediation or impasse last year. They agreed to a successful contract.
Right.
Before it all you want, but the bottom line is you still took four out of the eight.
Yeah, we were giving a presentation, we're giving a public presentation, I believe, by the then fire chief regards to safety and the scene of a fire and things like that. This was all part of it. And again, like Mike said, council was not privy to the actual negotiation sessions because that's not what the charter says, okay? It was thrown at us that that's where they were starting at one point. And then later on, the agreement was they give this, we give that, they give this, we give that. And we ended up agreeing to it. So, that's just the way it worked.
And all those, all those. Everybody, the fire department made clear in their letter and they made clear in their text message to me this morning, this is not a negotiation, said multiple times in their proposal. They have not agreed to open the contract. They have not agreed to negotiate. So, I asked the mayor to join me today so that there's somebody else in the room who is witness to these non-negotiating discussions to where he said, she said. I'm fairly capable of negotiating and we're forming a negotiating team when they allow me to actually negotiate. What they sent me to know was not a negotiation. In their words, it was a settlement offer, not looking to settle anything.
Right.
We, as leadership, have put a bench on the table. We, as leadership, have set a course for the fire department in the coming year. If they would like to negotiate a different plan, if they'd like to negotiate something different, I am ready and willing and able at any time to sit down and begin negotiations. We haven't had that.
I would like to see that. So, I'm in city hall and the fire department seized my truck apparently and they don't come in. But how do you, Mike, know that I'm here and they're not negotiating with me because I'm in city hall? I feel like, are you negotiating on side? It's funny, Dan, but I mean, that isn't right. I mean, this is the city manager's job. I'm going to be in there, you know, to listen. And are you guys negotiating on side?
Let them go. That's your calls, Mike. You want to continually, you know, that's how you want to roll? That's fine. You know, but that's not what the charter says to have it happen.
How do you know what went on today? You're, I was in contact with the firemen.
Of course I am. I've been in touch with every department in this city in the last year.
I don't think you represent the city. I don't think you represent it. All of you's represented it with the PLA. I don't think you represent it. I think you represent unions and not the citizens and not the taxpayers.
Look who's grandstanding now.
Yeah, I know. I learned from you. Okay, are we done with discussion or is there more?
No, I have more discussion. Back onto the budget. I don't agree with the fact that we are still going to have a secretary in the city manager's office. I think if we're expecting all departments to do less with more, I think that we need to start right at the top. I don't think that that money is well spent in the city manager's office. I think that we need to take that money and we could use it to save another firefighter.
I'll second that. The previous secretary made fifty-eight thousand dollars and you didn't have any problem with that?
I didn't hire her. All I'm saying is I think that right now we don't have one and hiring another person to work for the city is irresponsible when we are firing people.
If I may add, if you're going to have economic growth, which is the key to our future, then we need some more people, staff, to find and help with that economic growth in our city. So, if we want to stay stagnant, we've depleted the people in the city.
So, are you saying that the new, so are you saying that Steve's secretary is going to be in charge of economic growth now?
She's going to help free him up so he can work with the city planner and economic.
Her office is right upstairs. I mean, he doesn't have to go very far to work with her.
He needs to be freed up on his time.
He's very busy, very busy.
What else, sir?
So, okay, more discussion, anyone?
So, we had a motion and a second on that particular item. I made a motion. Nobody seconded it yet to table this until Monday to give the public a chance to comment.
I'll second that.
There we go.
Any further?
Was there a resolution? Oh, more motion and a second.
There was a motion to table the budget until Monday.
There was a motion before that.
A motion before that.
Kathy, there was a motion before that.
And that was mine and there was a second. That was to remove the secretary from the city manager's office.
That's right.
That we don't want to hire that position.
Actually, the first one was the city managers.
It was.
Okay.
Okay, so that's usually the order you're going. So, what's the first one?
To vote on it, when we vote on it? And proving the budget or not proving?
I can read it again for clarity.
I'm clear, but, you know, we're doing a dance second, right? No, we're.
There was a motion made by the manager.
Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead. Refresh us, please.
First motion I'm for is for the adoption of the preliminary 2021 budget as amended. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Augsburg adopts the 2021 preliminary budget as amended. And be it therefore resolved, the following rate shall be in effect for 2021. The city real property tax rate for 2021 shall be seventeen dollars and eighty-seven cents per thousand dollars of assessed value.
And I moved it and you seconded it and that opens discussion and that's where it's.
Point of order. Point of order here. During the discussion, a motion was made by Councillor Scamperly to table the motion to allow the public time to come in and discuss the budget and the amendments that were produced last night. I seconded the motion and then there was an additional motion after that by Councillor Kennedy.
Now, we have your order correct, Mike.
Yep, so we're going to vote on approving this now.
No.
No.
We're voting on the council.
We go to Dan's first, then we go to the polls and then we cycle back to the first.
Okay, there we go.
How was that, everyone?
Right. So. Kathy, will you read the, so we're all clear on what we're voting for?
This is a vote on a motion to amend to table this resolution until Monday. The motion was made by Councillor Scamperly and seconded by Councillor Powers. So, this roll call is to amend.
Yes, please call the roll.
Councillor Fisher?
No.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
No.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Councillor Dilaba?
No.
Denied.
We don't want to allow the public to speak.
We already held a public hearing, Dan, and the budget was out there and the public was allowed to speak. And we've taken their thoughts into consideration with the proposed amendments.
Thank you, John. Now, we have another, the second one. Would you clear us up on that?
Yes, so this would be a roll call to amend. It is a motion by Councillor Kennedy to remove the city manager's secretary's position from the budget. I apologize. I did not catch the second. I'm not sure if it was Councillor Scamperly or Councillor Powers because of the audio.
I seconded it.
Thank you, sir. So, again, this is a motion to amend.
Would you please call the roll?
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Rees?
No.
Councillor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Scally?
No.
Councillor Dilaba?
No.
Councillor Fisher?
No.
Denied.
Now, okay, would you read off what we're voting on so we're all clear?
Now, you have circled back to the original resolution that was brought forward. It was brought forward by Councillor Fisher and seconded by the mayor and it's for the adoption of the preliminary 2021 budget as amended with the changes that city manager, Mr. Jellie, has described.
Would you please call the roll?
Councillor Powers?
No.
Councillor Reed?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Scally?
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba?
Yes.
Councillor Fisher?
Yes.
Councillor Kennedy?
No.
Approved.
Our next item will be read by City Manager Stephen Jellie.
A law to allow for the changes to the Augsburg Municipal Code, section 177, entitled sewer water rates as dictated by the adoption of the 2021 budget.
I so move.
I'll second it. Discussion?
So, we're moving from a water rate currently of three seventy-five to three eighty-six twenty-five and a sewer rate is going to go from four thirty to four forty-three. Is that correct?
Correct. So, we're doing sewer right now, correct?
Yes.
We're doing sewer.
So, the sewer rate is going from four thirty currently to four forty-three?
Correct.
In regards to sewer, we all need to be well aware that the city undertook a forty million dollar rehabilitation project for the wastewater treatment plant. And next year, it's time to start paying that back and that's to the tune of about one point four million dollars. Out of, I think about, I don't know what kind of revenues generated, but, you know, I just don't know. That's going to certainly adversely impact the rates. I've been doing everything I could to get additional funding, but haven't been successful yet. But it's a serious concern.
People may not be aware, but John has reached out to every U.S. senator or congresswoman. He's working tired of sleep, you know, trying to get us some additional grants for this. This payment, 2023, like I say, John said, we will be going to two point three, two point four million dollars per year in payments from eight hundred thousand dollars this year. That's one point three, one point four million. It's only for forty years. Hopefully, we'll, you know, hopefully it'll hold up for forty years and we won't have to take a loan and rebuild it before it's paid for. It's a substantial debt and unfortunate. I believe that PLA cost citizens ten million dollars, but it's water over the dam.
All right, I've got a question. What is the projected cost of the sewer rate for the residents of the city of Hubbleton?
I don't believe that's been determined yet. Still working on it.
I thought it at least was, I thought it was projected from Dank.
It's only about a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty thousand a year in additional revenue. So, on a one point four million dollar payment, it's relative.
So on a one point four million dollar payment, it's, it's relatively significant.
No, I was, wasn't, I was just curious as to our, our rate versus their rate as to what was being paid.
I don't think the council has adopted a rate yet and that's still, uh, open for discussion.
I know. I just didn't know if there was a projected number. There's always a projected number. So I just didn't know what that exactly was.
So the, the projection counselor, at, at the moment, uh, with the formula that has been discussed was about a twenty percent increase above our city rates. Um, one of the things we'll be doing in the first quarter of twenty twenty-one is doing another top to bottom analysis on where we are with the project and what the, more like the ten or fifteen year projections are going to be on the loan pay downs and our payments. So we can establish a rate structure. I hope that's something the council, uh, to look at, um, sometime in February. Uh, we've got some data that was, that was done for projections to begin the project with some of the increased costs that we know we may be assuming with the additional items and things like that. Um, I, I owe out a, a pretty extensive analysis and report back on where we are and what the rates are going to need to look like. For council's, uh, awareness also, there is, um, a request by the town of Lisbon to begin a feasibility study, uh, to become a potential, uh, partner in hooking into the sewer project. It's in the very early preliminary stages, but there has been, uh, some discussion with the town supervisor, Mr. Nelson, and his communicating with, uh, the development authority as far as feasibility goes. Again, very infant at this point, um, but it's another avenue potentially of us, uh, having some revenue coming in for, for that project. So I'll give the council a brief, uh, sometime, uh, second, probably second meeting in January on, on where we are, uh, with the projection and analysis project. But, uh, this will be definitely a topic for, uh, for discussion, uh, going forward, what the rates and how we make this, uh, project affordable without, uh, you know, creating an exorbitant rate for our users.
So just to be clear, we have a forty million dollar zero percent interest bond, correct? Which basically we, we, we take to pay as the construction goes. We pay for our contractors and things like that, correct?
Correct. We, uh, have a, yeah.
Thank you. And so next, we have a fifteen million dollar grant that is a part of that forty million dollars. So we're actually borrowing twenty-five million at zero percent interest. So I just want to make that clear to the public. And Mr. Skelly, you said that the PLA cost the city at least ten million dollars. Can you please give us specific numbers right now as to how that ten million dollar number was contrived?
Well, uh, part of it was, uh, delaying the project, uh, to do a study, paying thirty thousand dollars for a study that.
No, no, the study costs, the study costs less than six, I believe.
I, I don't, I believe you're incorrect, but.
Can you tell me what the savings was by having a PLA and avoiding Wicks Law?
So.
Do you, do you know what that particular savings was? Have you even read the study?
The, the lowering the number of contractors, uh, you just took, uh, you just made it, uh, the price go up because with less competition, no one had to, uh, try as hard. Uh, and then the other thing is, you know, you should have been trying to secure.
Be specific, Mike. Be specific, please.
You should have been trying since.
Be specific, please. Mike, would you please be specific? I'd like to be specific, Mike.
And answer the question.
Answer the question, Mike. Instead of just hobnobbing around with nonsense on philosophy. Can you answer the question specifically, Mike? How much money was saved by avoiding Wicks Law? Just, just that in, in alone?
I think maybe we should just bring Dank back and do a presentation.
No, I, I think Mike needs to answer the question. He threw a number out there, ten million dollars. I want to know specifics or else you're just talking out your behind, pal, like you always do.
Like you are with your insurance savings, okay? Um, by limiting the number of contractors, that severely increased the cost. Also, if, if you.
Come on.
Dan, Dan, please don't interrupt.
Well, no, no, because he's not giving, he's not answering my question. He's just running at the mall.
Okay, let's go. Let's go. We are given factual information. The, the payment on your, if you bring it down to twenty-five or whatever, you got that number. I was in the, I was in the audit with the, um, with the accountants and she told me directly, your payment will start at one point four million dollars and run for the next forty years. Our conversation prior to that was the fact that we have debt on bonds that date back to two thousand two. And just this year alone, these, they just kept rolling because we kept just authorizing stuff. Was just our payment alone and the debt and the interest in, in the principal is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and ninety. So when we roll that in with the one point four million, uh, with the eight fifty-six, we're, we're, that's over two million dollars. Where's that coming from? I keep asking where this is coming from. I don't know if nobody else looks at these numbers, but I look at them all the time. You want specifics? I'll give it to you. Just where's that going to come from? It's one point four million unless the accountant sat in, in the audit and lied to me.
So, so how does the grant money work in there? That might be the payment, but in, but how does the grant money figure in part of that?
One point four million dollars of citizens of August, we'll make that payment each year, each and every year for the next forty years. Forty years. Now, I'm sorry, but I don't, the revenue is never going to come close to the expenditure. I, you can, you can scratch it wherever you.
Federal money and the state money in on that, too.
Well, I, that's the accountant's word. So then maybe I misunderstood. I don't think so.
I'm, I'm not denying that there's a payment, but a part of that payment is also grant money that you guys are avoiding to talk about.
No, Dan, no.
Yeah, yeah.
Grant money, the grant money is taken into consideration. You still have one, the loans you have to pay back, Dan, they're one point four million dollars a year.
It's a zero percent interest.
Yes.
Forty million dollar bond. You pay back the principal, though.
Forty, how come you guys get all this access to the accountant? I don't, I don't get an accountant.
You have, you have the audit. You, you have the audit. The audit was sent to you.
What happened, Dan, that along with Nicole, myself and Counselor Reach, we're on the audit committee where she gave the presentation. That, that's how, that's how we had access to it. Maybe he'll, he'll put you on it instead of me next year.
There you go.
I don't think so.
And we also have a B, B A one, uh, we also have a, uh, a B A one rating, uh, from Moody's Investor Service, which is a credit risk, and that was based on the existing, uh, debt that we have. It doesn't include the forty million dollars in due debt that was undertaken.
If I, if I can talk a minute, the, the other thing is, uh, the previous to our council, um, it's been, it was, um, fund balances being used to keep the rates lower, but then they will go up if we do not raise them. Just so citizens know, sewer rates will be going up and up and up because if they don't, the sewer, uh, fund balance will be bankrupt in twenty twenty-nine. And, and, you know, we do have good numbers, Dan, because the accountant and that city manager do an amazing job of, of running numbers. And when you do approve things to pay for things and buy things, it's always good to run numbers and, uh, and know how much it's going to cost you and if you can afford it. So I'm very happy for their work.
Okay, let's go.
All right, we're voting?
It's you.
Uh, call for votes, Kathy.
Counselor Reed?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabot?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item will be read by city manager Stephen Jellie.
Allow, allow for the changes in the Augsburg Municipal Code, section two one five, sections thirty-nine, forty and forty-one, entitled Water Rates As Dictated By The Adoption Of The Twenty Twenty-One Budget.
I saw move.
I'll second it.
We're going to vote on this this time or are you guys going to grandstand again and create this big argument?
Well, I.
I think you're, I think you're starting it out, correct?
I think it's.
So go ahead.
Discussion time.
Take, take, take all your, all the time you need to.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, I would like to bring up that, uh, our water plant, uh, projections are made of, uh, thirty million dollars and renovations needed to that in the future. So we'll put that on top of our, our sewage, uh, plant. And, and then we have six million dollars we need for our pump stations, uh, plus we have a bridge, uh, and other roofs, so, um, not to discourage citizens, but, uh, been a lot of neglect and it's going to be costly in our future. Any other discussion? Kathy, would you call the roll?
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabot?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
All right, no.
Counselor Powers?
Nope.
Counselor Reed?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, our next item will be read by city manager Stephen Jellie.
Allow, allow for the changes to the Augsburg Municipal Code, section one seven seven, entitled Sewer Water Rates As Dictated By The Adoption Of The Twenty Twenty-One Budget.
I saw move.
I'll second it. Got a second? I'll second it. Okay, uh, discussion?
Uh, the audit committee does a great job every year communicating with us and doing the audit. It was a clean audit.
I've just, uh, pointed out a, a citizen's concern that, um, you know, it, it takes an awful long time to get that audit. And I, I brought that to the manager's attention and I think next year we should have one by June or July prior to the budget.
Thank you, John. Typically, I believe that's normally the timeframe for it. Um, and I think, I think COVID had a bit of a role in this, uh, but, um.
Yes, that's probably true.
It, Dan, we've secured now, uh, an agreement, uh, for the, the audit going forward. Uh, we'll have all of our material with them on or about the first of April and they hope to deliver a final product to us, uh, on or about, uh, the first of July.
Great.
I, I think also, um, I think Mike brought it up with a few meetings back. Um, maybe in twenty twenty-one, we should reach out to the controller's office and maybe see if they come up and do a forensic audit for the last three years.
I think that would be a good idea.
I've already formalized that in writing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussions? Uh, Kathy, would you call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabot?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reed?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Could I, could I just make one comment?
Oh, yes.
I, I just, uh, you know, I, I, I think there's still an opportunity to, you know, for the union to open their contract and to negotiate. Uh, I, I think we're all open-minded. Um, you know, we're all concerned and, uh, I, I, I'd like to believe we could work together and, and solve this, uh, you know, it's not like it's over, so.
Thank you, Jimenez. So, uh, all in favor?
Mayor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, all opposed? Adjourn.